When I was talking on the phone, I was like, why did you go out there with a microphone?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start. It is 6:00 PM and I will now call the City Council Work Session Meeting to order. And I would like to call on Jev Hunsacker, Public Works Director, to present.
Good evening, Council. So tonight, I'm going to be introducing the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, prioritization framework. This is something I've talked about a little bit since I started working here a couple of years ago now, and finally trying to get it off the ground for this year's budget. And wanted to introduce it to you all, what the framework is, and also get feedback on some policy discussions, because ultimately, the goal of this is to match our Capital Improvement Plan with the values and priorities of the city and the City Council, who represents So, first thing is, why do we need a prioritization framework? One of the biggest reasons is our growing infrastructure needs. This isn't something that's unique to McMinnville. This is something across the entire United States. Infrastructure is aging. We're a relatively young country still, but we're catching up to some of the issues that we see over in Europe and some of the other older parts of the world, where we have aging infrastructure. It's just what it is. But with that growing infrastructure need, we also have more and more finite resources. Now, this can be financial, this can be staffing. At this point, there's always going to be more infrastructure work needed than resources available to the city. Everybody's experiencing that. And so what we need is a framework that we can use to help make our decisions on what we do first, what we do second, how do we sequence things, all that. Currently, the process that we have for the CIP is less formalized or even non-existent. We don't really have five-year capital plans. We have our adopted master plans that have projects within them, but those often, we haven't been, we're updating a lot right now, but some of them are getting pretty old. Our wastewater one, for example, is getting close to 20 years old now. It's, in all my years of doing this, I've never seen a CIP that's usually a five-year plan actually work out the way you predicted five years in the past. There's always changes. So, this is something we need to be keeping up to date on annually. And then, like I said, we need priorities. A big thing for the Council and for this community is transparency. We want people to understand why we're choosing the projects we're choosing. We want it to be very visible to them, easy to understand. We want to be strategic within the city organization here, as well as with our partners and the greater governance outside of here, at the state and federal levels. And then we want to communicate. A big part of doing the CIP prioritization is a communication tool. It gives time for myself or other directors to come up and explain to you why we're choosing the projects we're moving forward. It gives you a chance to communicate back with us that those projects may or may not be aligning with the priorities you're hearing from residents or businesses in the area. And so, really, it's trying to hit all these things. But it's big. It's trying to encompass the capital work for an entire city. We're talking millions of dollars annually. So I kind of touched on these a little bit, but the goals of the framework, like I said, it's aligning our projects with the Council goals and the greater community goals. And then also our adopted plans. These are those master plans I've talked about, Transportation System Plan, Wastewater, the ADA Transition Plan, all these plans are getting adopted, making sure that what we're actually implementing from there is getting carried out. We want it to be a clear and repeatable process, want it to last beyond any of us. We want it to be carried out year after year. If the organization changes, it's in flux, people are involved, and so you want it to be very easy to understand, and it just happens every year, and it's just like the budget process. We're going to always do it. Again, that transparency and trust, we want the community to know why we're doing the projects we're doing, especially when we're talking millions of dollars. They have the right to know how their money is being spent, so we want that to be as transparent as possible. And also, that just breeds trust. And for me, trust is probably the most critical component of doing this kind of work. If you don't have trust, it's really difficult to have a community embrace the work that you're out there doing. It's often very impactful to the community. Construction's messy, always messy, spending a lot of dollars, and so you want them to be able to trust in that process. Another reason is better grant competitiveness. A lot of what this process does is gather information for decision-making at this level, but it also gathers information that's needed for grants at higher levels. So usually, when a grant opportunity comes up, there's often a scramble to get some data, compare it to other projects, what project scores the best for this. Politics changes at every level, and so what grants become available change. And so, if we have that information ahead of time, it allows us to be more competitive because we can jump on those projects, or we can realign our priorities to match those priorities of the organizations that are putting out money. And then lastly, it's a cross-department integration process. This is not Public Works CIP, this is not Community Developments or Finances CIP, this is meant to be the McMinnville CIP process. And so, having a process that's formal like this, you're making sure that you're talking with all your colleagues to get the project scored and the information in there. So, just real quick, I thought it might be helpful to define what I mean by a CIP project and what would be in this plan. We don't want to put everything in this, that'd be too much work, but in general, a CIP project, now, these are general rules, there's always some flexibility in these, but it's usually a major public improvement, so something that's got a 10-plus-year life, over $100,000. Now, that's not always an exact, sometimes you're going to have CIP projects that are less, sometimes you're going to have maintenance projects that are more. For example, roadway maintenance, paving, filling potholes, doing pavement patching, the striping that we have to do annually, those are things that are routine maintenance, and sometimes they can creep over $100,000. That's a different program for the Council to have input on, on whether or not there's priorities, that's not something that would be in this plan. CIP projects are generally construction, reconstruction, expansion, major renovations, so large changes to your assets. And like I said, they exclude that routine maintenance. So, where do these projects come from? So, the prioritization plan is meant to score the projects that are in the pipeline. The question is, how do they get into the pipeline? One of the main ways that they get into that pipeline is those adopted plans I was talking about earlier. When we go through a master planning process for wastewater, we're identifying the technical basis for the needed projects for that system. But what we don't always do after that is look at the other aspects of a project that you wouldn't bring into that master plan. For example, community partnerships, or maybe, is it supporting jobs, things like that. That would be information that comes through other plans and has to holistically come together in a CIP. Other places that projects will come from, condition assessments. So, we're out there taking stock of the sewer pipes when we're videotaping them on our six-year basis or so. That's one place that can come from. We did the condition assessment for the facilities back in 2019, so we have a lot of data on that. That's one place where projects come from. Regulatory mandates, we'll often get unfunded mandates that come down from the federal level or the state level, and that triggers the need to do a process, change at the plant, or a new stormwater system for developments moving forward, or whatever it might be. Community engagement, obviously, if the community's asking for a specific project, that's one that we want to build a scope for and score, to see if it's important and aligns with the policies for the community as a whole. And then council direction, obviously, the Council can, at any time, say, as a majority, this is a project we'd like to see move forward. So, based on my experience doing this in the past, and kind of looking to align this with values I hear from the Council, at goal-setting and things like that, I identified eight proposed scoring categories. I also worked with some of my fellow executive team on this. So, we have eight categories, maintenance responsibility, partnership and project coordination, health and safety, community engagement, socioeconomic, economic vitality, resiliency, livability, and connectivity. I have a star next to livability and connectivity, that's one I've found works best for civic transportation park-type projects, but it's kind of hard to apply to routine utility projects, like a sewer project. The community doesn't really engage so much with a sewer, which is a good thing. So, these are the eight proposed categories, and kind of diving deeper, just, oh, sorry, go ahead and go back. I have another slide later that goes over this, but these eight categories, what we're looking for is subject matter experts in each of these categories that would score their individual portions. So, it's not one person scoring this, it's a scoring committee made of people who have expertise in these different areas, and then they do the scoring for it. So, the overall process for this is a project lead, usually it's a project manager that's been assigned, but it could just be somebody that's in a department that has been assigned this. They'll go ahead and fill out a scorecard or a questionnaire that'll have specific questions, and then how you are supposed to answer them. So, tries to keep the process as objective and consistent as possible. Then those scored answers, or then those answers will go to the scoring committee, which will be composed of multiple people who have the expertise in those different areas, so they can actually decide if it's a low, high, or medium score for each of those answers. Then we add the weighting to those scores, the weighting is done after, and that's the most important role that the Council plays in this process, is in the weighting. But after all this, the Council does review the ranked list. Ultimately, as part of the budget process, the Council is approving what projects are moving forward. So, the staff is proposing what projects are moving forward based on your values and priorities and everything, but ultimately, it comes down to, is the Council going to fund those projects to move forward or not? So, this is diving deeper into what do I mean by some of these categories. So, when I say something like maintenance responsibility, what I mean is, it could be the asset condition, so is the asset in poor, fair, or good condition? And that would mean how it would score as a low, medium, or high in that instance. For health and safety, it could be something like crash data for a roadway intersection. For economic vitality, it could be, does this project support job growth, or does this project support business access or freight access? For something like resiliency, it could be, is this project adaptable to climate change? And then livability could be something like, does this project support active living, whether or not that's a Council priority or not, but that's kind of what I mean by each of these individuals. They'll have multiple questions per category. So, for something like, in partnerships, the scoring guide would look at, is there no partnership in this project? So, it's just the city that's doing it. That would score low in a partnership score. But if it's something we're coordinating, say with Mack Water and Light, to make sure, are you going to be doing your water line at the same time we're doing the sewer line, so we're not cutting into the street twice in five years? That would just be a medium, it'd be coordination, but if we have a formal IGA with them, that moves it up into a high. So, that's kind of, so the scoring, the project lead would go in and would answer that question about the project. Yes, we have an IGA with Mack Water and Light for this project, and we need to complete it within five years. Okay, we have a high, a formal agreement, so it's going to score high in that partnership. So, that leads me to the first discussion point with you all, is, are these the right categories? Now, there was documentation that was included in your packet of why these different categories were the ones that I chose, but I'm happy to answer questions on specifics on these categories, but what I want to know from you all is, are these the categories that are important to keep track of for the Council? There'll be another question they'll look at, is one more important than another, but this is the area where you would be collecting data to inform our choices.
Are we okay right now, so far?
If I hit the nail on the head, I'm good with that. And again, this is something that, over time, I'm not expecting to get this dead-on right the very first time. This is an annual process, so we will always be making improvements.
Right now, it sounds like we're good.
Okay, if we're good with these categories, this will be an easy work session. So, now jumping to the weighting, so this is the Council's key goals. This is where, you know, we want to gather as much data as possible. Priorities change, they can change for a variety of reasons, especially in politics, this era of politics, that's really been, since the Reagan era, has really been about pendulum swings, there's just been no consistency. Political scholars haven't really been able to define this era. So, the priorities are going to change over time, we know that much. So, I want to be able to gather as much information as possible, but really, the most important role that the Council plays is changing the priorities over time. So, maybe we catch up on our maintenance requirements in the future, and that's not such a big thing, we're looking more at economic growth, jobs, that's something we want to score higher for projects. We need to be able to adapt to that over time. So, that weighting is going to reflect your priorities, and that will influence the final ranking, so there's no scoring that happens after that. What's nice about that is it can be easily modified then. So, we do all the scoring without the weighting, and then apply the weighting. So, if the policies ever change, we don't have to re-score the projects, we just tweak the weighting, and you can get new information. Well, if this is more important, would this project jump ahead of that project?
So, once you do these projects each year, do they come to the Council prior to budget or just at budget?
Essentially, they'll be prior to budget, because the CIP itself will be likely a five-year plan. I've seen some places try to go to a 10-year plan, but that can be a bit of a stretch. We look further out, especially for large infrastructure projects than five years, but it can be pretty difficult to plan out beyond that. So, you will see the projects coming down the road five years before they get there. So, when we're scoring things, we're, actually, what we will end up doing is scoring that project that's five years out. You should have a pretty good idea what we're going to be building next year, ahead of time, especially if it's a multimillion-dollar project, you should know about that project prior to budget. So, most of the tweaking happens in that future-looking, but obviously, the Council at budget time can say, you all, we need to pause that project for whatever reason we're not going to move that forward. But you would know about the projects inherently ahead of time, because this is a five-year plan.
And I would assume that we'd probably also be looking at them anyway during our goal settings?
Be looking at them at your goal settings, they would come to you every time we do adoption of a new master plan, those you generally want to do on five-year rotations, because again, so much can change in five years, but you don't always get to do that. But yes, you'll hopefully be seeing these at multiple points.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions right now?
Which then leads to my second question. Are any of these categories more or less important to the Council right now? And I know this isn't a decision-making time, this is something I would bring back to officially adopt by resolution or something like that in the future, but I have to have a general idea where you all are leaning, so any and all information or thoughts you have here is good.
I have thoughts, but does somebody else want to speak first?
I can go.
Councillor Cunningham?
Yeah, I would say, obviously, since we are looking at what we're going to be doing with the swim center and the rec center, and obviously, the concerns that we've heard up and down this dais of deferred maintenance leading to basically demolition by neglect, so I would assume that type of project is, we're talking about in number-one category, but I think it would also probably touch on number-three, the health and safety. And then, obviously, we've done a lot of investing in long-term projects at this point, the McMinnville Landing and RB Rubber, and so I would personally say that, you know, making sure that economic vitality is a part of that, because obviously, that will lead to better-paying jobs, which will hopefully lead to people being able to purchase their own homes and that type of thing. So, I would say, I weigh those a little bit heavier at this point in time.
Okay, I'll speak next. So, I agree that maintenance responsibility, I think we need to take care of what we have and stay on top of it, same reasons that Scott said. Health and safety, economic vitality, I think with the partnership or project coordination that that may come into play with, depending on where the bond goes, and if we can come into some partnerships, but again, we won't know that until it happens. And then I would go to livability, connectivity.
The other councillors want to weigh in? Councillor Gary?
So, maybe I'll ask where this would be in here, sort of net citizen impact, right? So, like, hey, if we pave this street and build this thing and improve the sewer under here, this reaches, you know, 973 households, and, you know, we could sort of look at, yeah, it might not help develop business, but we just impacted 973 households. Now, you can't, versus, you know, seven businesses that might be affected on this section of this road, you know, you're not going to run an apples-to-apples comparison, but I'd just, how would I look at this list and see where sort of net overall impact is for this project?
Yeah, it would depend on the impact. There is a specific question on, I believe it's in the socioeconomic one, about how many residents...
Jeff, can you move yours?
Sorry. It would depend on which, what type of impact you're talking about, but I think, for example, socioeconomic, I think, looks at the most...
Considers equity impacts on low-income communities and communities of color.
That's part of it. It also has an additional question in there that looks at how many residents are impacted. So, are you spending $5 million on a project for 10 houses when you're spending $5 million on a project for 900 houses? So, I believe that's in socioeconomic right now, but I will put a note that...
So, that one would be kind of fall in there, yeah, resident, okay. And that aligns with what I was thinking, but I wanted to ask the question. I'm going to do a quick ranking based on that, and you can come back to me.
Okay. Councillor Payne, did you have? No. Councillor Tukowski? Gave me the evil eye there.
I'll go after Council President, thank you.
Oh, thank you. My only comment is, I would probably reduce the number of categories and just make it a little bit less complicated to just maintain year over year. I realize that a lot of times, we put together these types of frameworks to make sure that decisions are not being made in an arbitrary way, and so the idea is to sort of put some kind of quantitative plan together. My view on those is they sometimes still reflect bias in general, and so it's better to just simplify it, have fewer measures that you're looking at for criteria, just because I think over time, it's going to be easier to just maintain. I am not sure if Zach's question leads him to the conclusion that the socioeconomic frame should be maybe moved up, but I do think that it should be moved up. I really appreciate the utilitarian perspective of, how much are we getting out of the squeeze from this juice for, you know, the residents broadly?
I think as long as I want to make sure that that is based on all residents, I mean, I appreciate the fact that color and low income, but also, like, not just that, is the overall citizen group.
Yeah, it's, there, it's information that you'd want to have making decisions, you know, it's how many residents is impacting. If it's, say, a sidewalk project, it's, say, if it's a sidewalk project, you might be looking at, is this neighborhood have a higher population of people with disabilities? So, the sidewalk would be more important, that kind of thing. So, it's all information that informs your decisions, but it's meant to be just objectively put in there, and then the weighting is what does, you know, what's more important or not, for sure.
May I ask a follow-up to that?
Yes.
So, you know, when we're talking about the impacts that a given project has, you know, we can talk about households, you know, if you're talking about an area, just using an example that's current, like the McMinnville Landing, where the number of jobs, and therefore the number of households impacted is rather substantial, potentially, how is that going to be calculated? Is that factored in as part of that socioeconomic number, or how do you factor in the impacts on the housing when you're talking about commercial impact versus residential impacts?
I think that's kind of where the nuance gets a little too complicated for a repeatable process, and that's where you all, and your expertise as the policymakers in the city, because just because a project scores higher than another, you all can say, look, I understand that that wasn't 85, and this other project is 87, but I know that this is going to be a bigger impact for my community, and so I think we should put this one above that one, and then we as staff carry that out. It's a very transparent process that way. We scored it the way we scored it, and you made a choice to move one up based on their information that you had that wasn't in there. So, it's hard for us to, like, get to all of that nuance, so like I said, it's really kind of falls more to you and why you all are involved in the process.
Councillor Gary?
Can I give you my prioritization?
Yes, you can.
Using your numbers? Ready? 1, 5, 7, 8, 2, 3, 7, 4. That's in order. I like 7 a lot.
Okay. Can you say it again? I guess I could go back and listen to it, but could you say it slower?
1, 5, 7, I'm going to delete my second 7. 8, 2, 3, 4. And then, the one I forgot to name is last.
Which is evidently 6.
Yeah, you don't care about our economy.
Forgot about that one.
It's last.
That's it for me.
And they're all going to be in there, you all.
They're all good, they're all good.
Well, maybe not all. Kind of going back to your comment, Councillor, you say potentially reduced categories, is it, you think we should have just, like, 6, 4, is there a number, you think? And also, is it that information something you'd like to see wrapped into other ones? Yeah, I think this would exist. Yeah.
It's not even on this time.
I could hear you.
Yeah, just fewer categories, broaden the categories, and don't try and take something that's essentially an art and turn it into a science through this process, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Can I add on to that?
You're talking to an engineer, though, so that's hard to hear.
I feel like, I kind of came to the same idea as Sal worried it was too much, but my, and mostly, it's like, this might be a great way to look at the CIP, four CIPs from now. Right now, our first one is going to be like, we need to do all these right away. I don't think, you know, it's just going to be a little bit of hornswagging or moving furniture around. We have so many urgent needs all over that it's going to be a little bit, I think it's going to take a few times where we can start working on projects and getting projects done and get in the habit of prioritizing, that we're going to be able to really work through this list in a better way.
Yeah.
So, I kind of agree, but I also kind of feel like, let's just, we've got to get this thing propped up and start working through projects first.
Yes, and very aware of that. There's another slide later where we talk about phasing of this. So, I'm not going to try to do every single project in the city next year.
Can I get clarification on the definition of the word hornswaggle in this context?
It's like a negotiation with wrestling.
Okay.
Google it, Chris.
But yes, this is intended to be phased partly because we don't have updated master plans for all these different categories right now. So, I don't want to use 20-year-old master plans to go through this exercise when I know I'm going to have a better one here soon. So, it will be phased. So, intent is not to kill ourselves on this end.
Counselor Gary?
That, sorry. That beggars the question of, in an early metric, would it be sort of age of information that the project is based off of? So, sort of, if we have a relatively recent plan that's informing this project versus this plan is based off of 30-year-old information that we're in the process of renewing, should that get weighted on that project to say, hey, if we stall on this for four years, we're going to have an updated plan and be able to do a better informed project?
So, right now, the way we would do the scoring is we wouldn't attempt to try to score projects on that old information. Then, once we score it based on the new information that comes in through these adopted plans that council's adopting, and they get wrapped into the CIP, they can be rescored as things change. So, if we have quick deterioration or something we didn't know about, say that we have a facility, we didn't know there was an issue, all of a sudden, we opened up the attic and there's black mold or something. That, one, it could be an emergency that we've just got to skip the process. This is a health and safety thing that's so important, we're doing this next year. Or it could be we rescore this with this new information we have. So, we're not going to have eyes on everything all the time. We're always getting new information. When I look at this process, I'm thinking of something that's going to be in existence for quite some time. So, it's definitely a slow roll on this. I want this to be a process that people, staff working at the city 15 years from now, are using just as much as, we kind of have to do what we got to do now for our own information and what we know is going on with our current priorities. But you got to start it at some point.
Counselor Tokolski, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I had a couple of questions for you. First is about the numeric weighting. And how is it that we keep these equal when you have subject matter experts, that some of them are great salespeople, and they'll get everyone excited and rate it high, and then others are poor salespeople, and they'll end up with twos instead of tens? That's my first question. How do we equalize that?
So, again, it's intended to be objective, and it actually has metrics for how you score these projects. So, if a person is keeping everything fives, and you're looking at the responses, you can quickly see that this is biased, hopefully, is the idea. It's not meant to be a sales tool so much, but that is something that can be considered and would have to be just followed through with administrative checks as we go.
Yeah, that was my first concern. And then, the second thing that I had, you talked earlier about basically grants and the ability to acquire more grants because of the plan. I've made a couple of notes here. I'm just going to read. I didn't see anything about funding readiness as a category, and that would be like, I mean, it really comes down to money, whether or not we have it or not, and whether or not we can acquire grants. So, I don't know. How are we going to take into consideration, like, how would, whether the design's complete, are the permits ready, is there environmental review that's been completed, whether or not a grant is available for the timing? How do we make a funding readiness initiative to make these happen?
So, the funding readiness, I'm somewhat thinking out loud here. I don't think would necessarily be a scoring category, because they're going to be funding-ready or shovel-ready or however you want to call it, just by the nature of when they're falling in your strategic plan. Sometime, the partnership and project coordination category does have a question about, is there available funding that's in a short term needed? So, it's somewhat captured there. But again, that's one of those nuanced things where it's like, look, we know that project scored lower, but it adapts to this grant better, and we're further along. So, really, when it comes down to grants, you're just kind of picking your winners. You want to win them. So, you often are picking what's your best chance of winning. And sometimes, that'll be a project that's lower on your priority, but it allows you to have that many more resources for your higher priority project.
Right.
So, that's just.
Completely, completely agree with you. And I guess what I would like to see is, how are we going to set ourselves up financially to make certain that we're ready to acquire those opportunities?
That's a much larger process that's going to heavily involve finance and the city manager when we're talking about the overall funding for some of these.
Okay.
Because ultimately, we're, I don't want to bring you a five-year plan that has millions more in improvements than what we have the dollars for. It's meant to be a realistic plan, and you will have, you would have unfunded priority projects beyond that. So, that would hopefully spur policy discussion then on, do we need to modify our revenues to get some of these priority projects built? But that's, again, another process. This is just, hopefully, a tool that will help inform that discussion, but it wouldn't really do all of that either, if that makes sense.
Yep. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, kind of going back to Zach's and your discussion of the old plans and the weight that they have. But I would assume that there are projects on those old plans that we have not gotten to yet, and that there may be significant priority, even though there's not a new assessment done.
Yeah. I mean, there's TSP projects that we haven't been able to get to yet, a lot of them that we did. But the new TSP is going to identify a whole lot more projects.
Sure.
TSPs are probably the most notorious for identifying unfunded needs. It's just kind of how they, how they work. There's always more you can do for your transportation system to make it safer, make it more efficient. And it's always one of the harder ones to get resources for. But did that?
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on Counselor Tokolski's questions, which I thought were very well made. With regard to anything on this list, I assume that if funding opportunities come available with the state for something that's maybe ranked eighth or whatever, but it's, but outside funding is available now, that's still going to come to us regardless of how we've prioritized these, I assume, right?
Yes, that would be the intent always.
Okay.
Counselor Chenoweth?
So, first off, I'd like to apologize for the confusion over SIP. I figured out what that was, I figured out what my confusion was.
Oh, for CIP?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The ODOT has just released a new interim funding model called the SIP.
Oh, yeah.
And so, when you stated that, I was like, why are we talking about that here when, not realizing it was two separate projects until I dove into the packet? So, my apologies for that email exchange.
We're good.
And then, if I were going to rank this, I like the discussion so far. I'm going to avoid repeating things that were already said that I thought were good and I agree with. So, if I were to rank this, I would go, I think what we heard across the board is one as number one, and then, three, and then, six, and then, eight, and then, probably the remaining four would be tied.
Any other comments?
I think that's probably what I have. Oh, I did have one question for you. It seemed like I was going through this, I don't know how to say this without being too, sounding like I'm being too critical, but it seemed like this was a great program for a large city and maybe kind of overly ambitious for a city our size. What would be your response to that thought?
Well, this was something that I originally developed with our CIP program manager in Beaverton, which is a larger city. So, it was intended to, for a larger city, yes. But it's also something that I believe in and really helps staff objectively bring a structure forward that the council can trust. I don't think that what's in here for scoring projects is a heavy lift, because it scales with the amount of projects. So, since we're a smaller city, there's less projects that we're usually scale, putting in here, so there's less to score. But if it's something that, yes, we're trying and every year, we're failing to actually get you the full document, then I've overextended, and we need to pivot and simplify it. So, trying to make it work for the city, and I took that into account, but if there's specifics on what you're looking at, I'd be happy to.
And as a follow-up to that, how many man-hours are you anticipating it's going to take to do this every year?
Oh, every year? Well, the CIP process should be something we're doing as part of budget every year anyway. And we kind of do it now, just, we're not looking five years out always. The scoring side of things, it takes, I've done these myself, it takes about 45 minutes to score one project, maybe an hour, when you're, because it's intended to be pretty clear how you score it, and you're just filling in the information. And then, after that, the score, when you score them yourself, which I've also done, it takes about 15 to 20 minutes per project to score them. So, when I did this the first year in Beaverton, and we did this for all categories, not just one, which I'm proposing for the phasing out, I think the most, outside of our CIP program manager, who this was her job, individual staff spent maybe 10 hours a year at the most doing this.
And that's going to be an increase over what they're doing currently of what?
We're kind of indirectly doing some of this, but yeah, probably one to two at the most.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gary, and then, yes, Director Henry?
Just, I just wanted to add to that one.
Okay.
So, as far as CIP programs go, this is something when I came here that I asked if there was a way that we could get, because it's almost impossible to do the budget without a CIP program. And the program that we're proposing, so Heather and Geoff and I are on the team together, and we've been putting this together. Geoff's our spokesperson here, and he's done a lot of the work. But in Sherwood, where I was finance director, for example, which is a city much smaller than McMinnville here, our CIP plan was as robust as this one here that we're presenting you here. And we, you know, it makes for more funding opportunities, because a lot of times, if you don't have a CIP, you can't go in for those grants. But there's other things that we are going to need to bring to you throughout this budget process, and I would say, over the next two to three years, that we will need to have that support for. And if we don't go through this process and roll this out bit by bit, we're going to have to roll out something much larger in three to five years in order to get all of the infrastructure needs for the city. And so, what we're trying to do is roll this out with what we will need for 10 years down the road by giving you the whole package, and then, can we roll this out, this piece this year, this piece next year, this piece the year after that, so that it's fully rolled out in as big of a process as we will need when we need it. So, I just want to remind you that there's a much bigger picture than this for what we need to do today.
Thank you very much for that. Mayor, can I follow that up with a question?
Yes.
What, so what is the window, the horizon that this is intended to inform?
So, from my point of view, and you can correct me if you're looking at it differently, we're looking at about 20 years, 20 to 30 years into the future, because we're looking at how mu, what are our rates if we're, you know, do we need to establish rates for storm water? Do we have, are our water rates adequate? Are we putting enough aside so that 20 years from now, we can replace the right thing? You know, do we have enough for wastewater to fix the plant in 15 years? These are things that are very long-term. They take a long time to do, and if you don't have a CIP in place, you just, you can't run these kind of numbers.
You concur with that, Jeff.
So, I agree that for infrastructure, we're often looking 20 years out. For the CIP itself, that's, the council's seeing, that's usually five years. But there's information that's coming out of the various master plans that do take into account that 20-year horizon that is impacting the financial decisions that Director Henry's talking about. I've even, we don't do water, that's backwater and light, and they do a good job with it. So, I'm not trying to take that on or anything. But water, you tend to look almost 50 years out, because some of the needs are just so big. But generally, yes, it's 20 years when you're doing your master planning, and then, you're looking at, what's our plan for how we're going to be spending those dollars for five years down the road. Things like setting rates and SDCs and all that, that's usually done with the information in mind of the 20 years. And that would come to you through that right process, which you had all said. So, we make sure that information is known, that yes, this is our five-year plan, but over 20 years, we're going to have to do this. So, we're setting rates, we're looking at that long, further out. But that wouldn't be a part of this. That's its own individual discussion for each of those different revenue sources.
Counselor Gary?
On the list, how would we, does a project's mandated requirements fit into this? Or would it?
Yes. I'm forgetting which category it's in, but often, something like health and safety would be an area where it's, you're being mandated to do it.
Regulatory considerations, okay.
But that's always something that, look, I know we're bringing a project that scored, like, number 26 on your priority list. I'm sorry, but we're being told we have to do this. So, we make that very clear.
Okay.
Hopefully. So.
Sounds good.
Nothing jumping out at you for that.
Counselor Payne, are you ready?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with Council President Peralta's comments about the number of categories. I feel like there's some crossover in resilience and livability and even into safety, and then connectivity to safety, and socioeconomic into the economic vitality and health and safety. So, it feels like it could be pared down a little bit. And then, I was, to that end, I was just curious if there's any incentive to have so many categories as far as funding? Like, are there going to be grants that are looking specifically at these things where we do need to rate them separately? at these things where we do need to rate them separately? I guess.
So that goes to the, the NOFO, that comes out of the Notice of Funding Opportunity for Individual Grants, and then they change. So the one we've been talking about a lot is, um, the Build Grant for Third Street. Two years ago, it was called the Raise Grant. When we had the changeover in presidency, that NOFO changed quite a bit on how they scored things. So in my mindset, it's good to have as much of that information as possible, because you don't know, and it's sometimes hard to predict where the administration's gonna be five years down the road, and so you want to have the information in case. So if we were applying for the Raise Grant four years ago, um, the data in the socio-economic category would've been incredibly important. It would've, um, been a massive, um, scoring, uh, category in that grant. Now, I've seen, I've looked at last year's grant, but it only came out like two weeks after the presidency switched over, so it was kinda rushed. So I'm really interested to see what the new NOFO comes out for the Build Grant and what, um, how it incorporates some of the, um, Secretary of Department of Transportation's mandates that he's put out. So I'm not quite sure exactly what's gonna be most important when we're going after the Build Grant in the next year or two. So I like to be prepared and have as much of that information as possible.
I'm just clarifying, there is some importance to having all of these categories. I, I mean, obviously, that, I guess that remains to be seen, but it could be important to have all of these categories.
These are all categories that in my years of doing this kinda work have influenced decisions when what you're going after grants or choosing which projects to construct. So that's partly why it's larger. These are all things that I've been asked questions about doing this work in the past. But I can always look at, it's always a good check to say, do I really need all of this as well? Because some of that information you can get pretty readily. A lot of new tools are being created all the time and things like that, that allow you to get information faster. No, AI is something that's gonna be impacting how we do our work in the future, so, um, it might not be as critical to track all this stuff in the future. For right now, it's things that, based on my experience and discussions with staff, what I'm recommending.
Understood, thank you for explaining that. Given that information, I feel like, at least in the short term, it's appropriate to continue with eight categories, and then in the future, in five years or 20 years, if it can be pared down, then pare it down, but it seems like it would get us off to a good start. Thank you.
Counselor Payne, did you wanna go ahead and kinda, based on these eight categories, rank your top ones?
Uh, one, three, two, I feel like I'm at the eye doctor.
Tried to make it big.
No, I mean like, would they do the vision check?
Which is better, this one or this one?
Yeah. Two, three, two, oh no, my screen just went to sleep. One, three, two, five, seven, eight, six, four.
Thank you.
Niner.
Counselor Tekolsky, did you rate yours?
I, I'm not interested. I, I think that it's been well represented there. I don't disagree with, uh, what's taking place. I did have a, a question, though.
Okay.
Let me find it on my paper here, the, oh, I was curious, Jeff, how do, first of all, um, your question specifically states, uh, the categories and should any of these categories be weighted higher or lower? Are you getting what you need from us in the weighting area? I mean, we're prioritizing, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, it's, um, I'm gonna take all this, um, digest it and then come up with something that I could bring to the council that I think would be really close to what you'd wanna see and would adopt, or a majority of you would adopt. And if it's not quite right, you're able to tweak it at that time, and then I'll adjust. So I'm trying to get as close as possible, so the more information I have, the better. So this is great. I'm gonna try to get close, and then you all will have another decision point in the future, uh, something I'll bring to you to lock that in.
And then, um, my actual question was, on the fin, on the finance side of things, um, how, how are we going to take into consideration the operating costs, if there is anything associated with any of these projects? How is it going to be presented? Staffing impacts, um, and also net, like, operating cost changes? I mean, there's a lot of financial, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the finances, obviously, why I keep talking about it, but.
The maintenance responsibility category has some questions about, is there gonna be less staff time needed after this project's done for regular maintenance? So for example, for, we have some notorious sewer lines here in the city that clog up more often than others. So on a project that's looking to replace that, it would score high in that maintenance category and would have a response about how, yes, we're gonna have less staff time devoted to maintaining that line moving forward. It could go the other way as well, it could be, we're building something that's gonna require more maintenance. So it could go up or down. So this would be a starting point for that, and then after that, it would just be clarifying communication with the council, um, if you're wanting more specific information than that on a, uh, project. So if I bring something to you and it's like, hey, I see that this increases maintenance, what does that look like? We can get you more information at that time.
Mayor, I did have one last quick question.
Sure, right ahead.
Thank you. Just for transparency consideration, um, I presume that we were going to be doing this, but it would be nice to have these scores and the choice points, uh, publicly displayed so that our constituents understand why we've selected things, and it doesn't seem like a, a political thing, but more of a, a choice that was made by those that were presented with a choice.
So when I've done this in the past, what you end up with is your five-year plan of what dollar you're spending and what years on the projects. And then all those projects will have a project-specific sheet or information sheet in the document that'll say what the scores were for the overall and the individual categories, and then the project information. And then that, it can be displayed as a PDF. I've seen it displayed, or I've done it, as a SQL database that can be updated online, and people can look into that. We also built, I've seen it built in the past where you connect that SQL database to GIS, so people can open up a map, and they click on the individual project and the information just jumps straight to it. That's actually not that big of a lift, we have all that capability now, we just gotta start building the database up.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you, I just wanna make sure it's transparent, so that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Let me ask one question, Chris. So if we would've had a CIP plan in place 10, 20 years ago, do you think that we would be in a different position right now with our buildings?
That is a loaded question.
Just a personal opinion, I mean, I guess, so looking forward, how important it could be?
I think the intent is to bring as much information to the body as possible for, to help you make your decisions. And so if you have that information in a structured and objective way, then I think whether or not you make decisions on what to do in the future from that, or what staff recommends, I think would naturally come out of it. But there's always just so many factors of why you may or may not build projects. I mean, the economics is a huge one, always. You know, some of these projects will necessitate increasing revenue to pay for if they get prioritized, and so that is something that's always looking at a much broader world than what we are individually dealing with here, because just economics are so big. So, um, maybe, um, I hope as 20 years from now, you wouldn't say, oh, I wish I had known that information, I would've changed my decision. I want you to have the information and then be happy with your decision moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, I would say one thing to that is if we know about a problem that needs resolution in 50 years, we can do something over 50 years that is far less painful to the, to our constituents, as opposed to having to do it in a five-year window, which might make it more apt to take place. Just as a thought. My questions, um, part of the reason I asked about how many hours it was gonna take was actually aimed at the number of, uh, uh, categories you had. If, if it was gonna take us 30 hours, then so many categories isn't very, maybe worthwhile. The minimum number of increased hours, you said one to two hours, to me, I would lean toward keeping all eight as well. I think that's, that's helpful. One of the questions I have, who actually does these scoring? I probably was, probably said in the first 10 minutes when I wasn't here, but who?
Yes, um, it's a shared workload. So the individual project manager or lead who knows the most about the project would fill out the information. After that, the people who score it is based on their expertise, so something like health and safety, um, I might have the city engineer as the person who scores health and safety.
So staff?
Staff, yes. And then maintenance responsibility, that might be, it could be the city engineer, or it could be, um, the, uh, our operations division manager. Something like economic vitality, I lean on community development more for that, because they have more information on jobs in the future with that. Community engagement, that could be our community engagement manager, there's lots of different, um, people that you could do, or you can keep it down to like just three people. It's, we're trying to find the person that's the most apt to get a good score out of it, and an objective score, not bury too many people. We wouldn't have probably eight people for eight categories, I'd try to keep it like three or four.
And then the process after that is those projects come to us to verify that we wanna go forward on the project. So I, I gave you a, a, a list of my priorities, but I'd almost wonder if we would be better served not to have any weighting, um, just score them based on these eight criteria, and then bring them to us and let us look at the results without any weighting.
I will be honest that I am trying to help you make your decisions, and the weighting is a way to synthesize and do that. If I'm just bringing you all the information that staff goes over, that's a big lift for the body to then look at all that information and make the decisions without any form of a recommendation. So there's a reason I do the weighting, and it's mostly to help you understand that based on information you've given us in the past, these would likely be your priority projects, and that's what we're recommending to go forward with. If we didn't do any weighting, you'd have to make that decision every time, and it would be a big lift for the council to do that.
And how often would you be changing that weighting? Because I mean, this body's gonna make our decision, but two years from now, we could have an entirely different body that has an entirely different weighting preference.
There's no set timeframe for changing weighting, so if I'm bringing information to you all and you all think, you know, these are not aligning with our priorities, you can say you wanna re-weight them, and I'll go through the process. If they're staying, good, there's no reason to go through the process anymore, so.
But that body would have to have a member that was part of this conversation to remember that they could re-weight this, or that would have to be brought up in that conversation and know they could re-weight what's coming at them.
Well, the document itself talks about how council sets the weighting and everything, and so it would hopefully be very clear that the weighting can be redone at any time, and I can make that more specific in the plan. You know, it's, we need to have a North Star of some kind for staff to be working toward. We're always pivoting based on the policies and priorities of the council, so that's, I don't think that's gonna be something that doesn't happen here.
Okay.
All right, anything else, or we can move on from here?
So like I was talking about with phasing, um, for this year, we're gonna focus on facilities projects. I'm gonna have to build them a little bit, because what we have is, uh, an asset condition, document for facilities, but not necessarily a, see, a facilities master plan. That's another future discussion, on something that the council may want to look at, um, investing in in some time. But we're gonna try to do it with the facilities projects we know about for now. Then next fiscal year, we would look at adding in parks and wastewater, because we'd have, we already have a pros plan, hopefully have more information about where we're at with the bond, and we will have an adopted wastewater plan. After that, would be looking at streets, because the TSP, potentially stormwater, that is definitely a potentially, um, that's still a decision with the body of what moving forward for that looks like. And then after that is that annual scoring for new projects, then any updates the council wants to see in the process. So next steps, hopefully, tonight, I've gotten a lot of good feedback on the categories and the weighting. With that information, I'm gonna try to finalize the tools and bring something to the council to adopt. After that, I gotta get the staff all trained up on how this works, and then hopefully you'll see that pilot project in this year's budget, so you'll have the information about facilities projects when you're doing budgeting this year. You don't have to do anything with it, it's just information. And then after that, we'll keep expanding it into the future.
Yes, Counselor Payne?
I'm curious what the training looks like, is that something like you can record a video and send it to Viki to throw on yoga and get done, or is this like an in-person, like, training for departments kinda situation?
It's more of an in-person training thing, uh, the bulk of the people that fill out these projects, what I've found has been CDD and public work staff in the past. That's usually who's responsible for getting capital projects built.
What, so the vision for, like, what do you envision for training as far as like hours, what's that look like?
I'm gonna sit James and his crew down and say, this is how you do the project, and show them all the great documents, and then.
So like four hours, so there's capacity.
Yes.
For all of these people to be trained.
It's not like a massive amount of training. Documents are, um, you can kinda learn as you do, the way the documents are designed, so you fill it out and it tells you how to do it, there's a, it's, it's got a recipe. Most of the work is online.
Well, hopefully, everybody can cook.
Um, so yeah, just the key takeaways of what I wanted to give you tonight. This is meant to be a structured process that is transparent, um, we're intending to align with council and community values. This will help a lot with our strategic fiscal planning into the future, this is something that, um, Katie and myself are gonna be talking about for quite some time here, because we're gonna have lots of planning, and then it's meant to be able to just keep doing every year. So yeah, after that, just, if there's any last additional values or outcomes you'd like to see with a process like that, um, now is the last chance to get them out there, other than that, I don't have anything else.
So this is for 100,000 and more, approximately?
Approximately.
Are we gonna put any plan together, because we have a lot of smaller projects? Is there, is there a thought process for a, a listing of the smaller ones?
So you're talking like routine facilities maintenance?
Yeah, that have been neglected.
Yes, that is something that is being done, um, in my department right now. David Renshaw, Gianni, and Chris are starting to put that information together and come up with a plan. We informally talk about it, um, and the executive team, and we're trying to get more formal on that, um, over time, so.
I would.
Our, our facilities group is still only a year old, so this is something that they will always do in the future, is talk to all the different, it's very similar to how, Scott does it for IT, he'll sit down with each of the department heads and talk about what are your needs and all that, and come up with these plans. It'll be similar to that, hopefully, we'll be able to. And then anything that the community sees, or you all see, please add, get, send them on to the city manager, we'll try to get them on.
I'm just, I like to see, yeah, I mean, I know there's a lot of things out there, so I kinda like to see, I mean, like, we've got the front steps at City Hall fixed, we have the blind here fixed. It's just nice to see what those things are and to know that we're accomplishing things, and I mean. And, I mean, Adam's done a great job since he's gotten here. So it's just, you know, seeing what those things are that have been accomplished, or what do we see happening?
I'll try, I'll talk to Gianni about maybe trying to share his scary spreadsheet that has like a massive backlog of stuff and all the things he's accomplished so far. But I think we can, I think I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, just to kind of see, because, you know, we do get a lot of questions. I mean, I was a citizen that asked the same thing. Why don't we take care of anything? And so to see that some things are being taken care of, we actually do want to have a plan to do that, it's nice to be able to, to see those and be able to share those. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, do you have a timeline for bringing the first tranche of projects forward? And I would agree with the mayor that, that, I appreciate that this exercise is about projects that are over $100,000 in value, but the other maintenance, you know, having sort of a regular beat of hearing when those are done, I really think that's a great idea. And then secondarily, I'd love to know what your work plan is in terms of the capital improvements for this coming year and when that's going to come back to us.
So for this coming year, I won't jump the gun too much on that, because that's part of the budget process. But we're hoping to have these projects scored by January so they can impact the recommended budget that we're bringing for, for facilities work. And I recognize that some of these are larger ones, and some of the money that the council has put aside to do facilities maintenance and all that is probably a update. Thinking there might need to be a work session on that or something similar in the future so we can catch you up on what, where the facilities program is, where it's going, what we're getting accomplished and all that. Because that's obviously something that's important to you all, is what I'm hearing. So I will find a way to do that. Because in the future, I want it to be a situation where you don't really care all that much, because it's just happening and you don't have to worry about it. And so then the, the maintenance plan would be something that is just.
It's a maintenance plan.
Happening, yeah. And it's really not something, but I recognize that's not where we're at.
Right.
So I will find a way to bring where we're at maintenance-wise in that program and how we're developing it, and get more information for the council on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Counselor Peralta?
No, thank you. That, that actually answered my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Payne, did you have a question?
It was me.
Who was it?
Oh, Director Henry, sorry. We have not yet released the budget calendar, pending that question you just asked about the facilities plan. So part of it has to do with us waiting for this work session to hear kind of the, the direction we were going with the CIP plan and making sure that we in the finance office were aligned with, with GIOF and the public works office and with you and council on how we're moving forward with the, the facilities plan so that we can give the executive team the right timeframe for when do we need all the list of the, the capital projects and things like that. So my question for, for you is really, as part of the January work session with the Budget Committee, will you want to discuss capital projects at all that will be very early in the process? Or will we bring it clear at the end along with the other budget items?
I think, yes, I think we need to look at our city manager, who has some direction for us.
I think there's enough to discuss in that budget meeting that the CIP gets discussed later on in the budget process.
Counselor Peralta?
Thanks, and I do agree with that, Adam. But I would say, I probably misspoke in my question because I phrased it as, in this next upcoming year, we were talking about the, the set-asides. But we actually set aside $1 million this year. So what I'm, what I'd like to know is.
How are we spending it?
How are we spending it this year?
Yes, so I can get you a breakdown of what we spent on that and everything. Right now, a lot of it kind of is sitting as a contingency right now, whereas we're building out this, I'll find a way to spend it, though. Don't worry about that.
Let us help you.
Fine.
We'll put something in front of you guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, is that your presentation for tonight?
That's all I got.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions before we close the meeting? Counselor Cunningham?
Ballpark, how big do you think this list is? Like, we talked about like 26.
No back of the napkin.
Which list? Facilities list, like Johnny's list?
No, 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 like the true CIP.
Oh, a true CIP?
Yeah.
Um, because you're going to be looking at park, civic, street, wastewater, potentially stormwater projects. So each of those categories that have all their own funding. Based on the size of staff now, you're going to have, you know, three to five projects in construction every year. So that means that the year, the next year, we'll have, you know, the three to five in design, and then the planning and all that. So you're talking three to five for like seven categories for five years. So that kind of gives you an idea of the sizing.
Counselor Chenoweth?
This is totally unrelated to anything we're talking about, but why did we have the benefit of all the execs here for this meeting?
Because they like me and they want to support me.
Aww.
So there was no, I, I can appreciate that, but there was no expected questions that we missed that we should have been asking that would have included them?
I wasn't sure what rabbit holes you all would try to go down. So I wanted to cover my bases, so if they got more technical or things like that, I wanted to be prepared, because this is.
Fair, I appreciate that.
Very large program.
I think the other thing to that, Counselor Chenoweth, is it's important that staff supports staff in something that's this big and has this big impact on the organization.
That's a good way to end this, Adam. So, good job. All right, I am going to close the work session at 7:17 so Sal can go home and have dinner. I don't use the gavel, thank you.